Okay, first, it's 7:02. I call the July 12th meeting through the village's self complaint board to order. Please stand in front of the agents.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who hold your hands on nation. And to the invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first on the agenda, we have the sign for La Voda Latina. Are you here for that? Yes, please come forward. And Steve, what do you want with that, Bruce? Or is this for you, please? Steve, can you name an address or director, please?
I'm in the town of Kesh, 52 Lafayette Avenue, Suffolk, New York.
Okay, we are back because we approved this sign for you. And what's up there is not what we approved.
Okay.
But this is the original sign that was approved. And this is the sign that's up there.
Okay, yes.
So what happened?
Basically, I'm not here because my wife shot it. And the bottom, and now I don't know what.
You went to remove it all?
And how did you answer this?
Yeah, it's, you know, La Voda Latina, it was Sammy. And then there's other words. And it's supposed to be done by a sign contractor.
Okay.
So do you have, do you have a sign contractor to produce a sign that we originally approved?
Not at all.
Okay, anybody else on the board want to comment on this?
Because it's a current.
First, this is probably screwed. I mean, the dimensions are completely off, the wording is completely off.
I'd say it's in our business just to give them one of those. And there's a sign company that'll do it.
Yeah.
We're saying this.
Yeah, you gotta speak a little louder so Bruce can.
Bruce has to get us.
Also, it's got to be a professional sign company to make that sign and put that out.
But is this just hand painted?
Yeah.
You got actual files, but Bruce can't get us. I don't know if the gentleman can hear you guys, but make your comments loud enough.
So what are your recommendations here? I mean, I've said the recommendation, so that we, you know, we approve the sign. And if, you know, the sign, the sign that we approved should be done at the long end point. That was the one that they originally put in. We spent the time, we approved it, and think that that should be the sign that goes up. Okay. Should we go on this?
Well, you know, it's really up to code enforcement to enforce this. So approving the other side, I mean, you know, you can take that position. You can also approve the sign he had for. Just looking to see if it's required. Excuse me, I need to be professional.
And we can approve because basically my stuff is only Spanish. This is what my wife directed the bottom. I know, I would tell you, no, I know it's the top one. I do this, and the bottom is my wife had it. And basically, like I say, my stuff's only Spanish. Basically, I don't know, we want to remove the bottom or is there any way to approve it?
What does it mean, the words on the bottom?
Basically, pretty. I'm sorry, since this is.
Yeah, what do you know? Was it though?
It's good food, cheap. Good, pretty cheap.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts, members of the board, on the sign?
I think it's my report of enforcement. We approved the sign, and it seems like.
Well, that's why he's here.
Well, I guess the question is, do you want to remove the sign that's there down or no?
We put up the wrong sign, and now he's in front of us to get approved of that sign.
Please, that's a new way, you know. I'm a jabber, I'm going to say.
Has everyone seen it? Just installed it?
Yeah.
So I can say that's.
Yeah, he's just a person.
Yeah.
Professional people are.
No, it's handmade.
Yeah, we approved actually a much larger sign for you than what you have here. So, I mean, is this a code enforcement issue? What are your thoughts?
What if you just painted that, that on that? Instead of what's there now, just put that on this wooden sign.
Or if he wants that sign, then have him.
Is that a fair question? That the sign is up there, just put that on it instead of that. Is that okay?
Well, see.
See, let me see.
You can give it to the content with the.
Well, this is what was approved. So if those four words were on that sign, we wouldn't be here today. Am I correct?
The only reason you're here today is if you're okay.
Just over the bottom.
Right, but what I'm saying is, paint over this completely. Start new and make it just say that on that sign.
I don't think you have other hand painted signs.
Well, it could be professionally lettered properly. You know what I mean? Have somebody come in and just do the lettering on the sign.
Is that viable?
Yeah, I'm sure you can just paint over that and then put these up.
Seems like a professional sign person should do it.
Then we're back to take that down and put this up. And that's what we're at.
But that may not be the name they want now.
Right, he doesn't have to.
That sign, if he wants those, that new sign that he's up that he hand painted, that's what he has to get approval for and have it done professionally.
I guess what's the objection to the sign that he's here with tonight? Or is there not an objection to the sign?
I think it just doesn't fit in with what every other person who's had a sign put up in the village and last however long sort of is in compliance with the same looking field and looking field, you know? That's what I think you have to do. You just have to look at other people's signs, come up with a new design, and have somebody do it professionally. You can't just hand paint the sign anywhere and anything you want on it. You just can't do it. That's what we're at.
So is that work where you just have it redone and just have it professionally done?
I can do that. I do it just whatever it's been approved.
Well, we'd have to get that out.
You have to.
If it's going to change from now, we're gonna have to get that out.
You're gonna do what we approved?
Yes.
Well, this is a.
What's happening?
This isn't an obligation for the sign he has hanging there now.
I pay now or second obligation, I'll be paying.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, if we don't move forward with that, it's not a matter of just giving, either he'll have to get a new design, put in a request for the new design, or he'll have to go with that. That, I mean, outside that, I don't know what the other options are.
Well, the sign is up, is a new request, except what we're saying is it's got to be had professionally.
Got to be professionally done. So should we approve?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with what's on the new sign, but it needs to be professionally done. I think that's a fair compromise.
Yeah.
Now, what's the sign made of? I mean, did you paint over the sign that was there? Is it wood? What is that?
Oh, it's plywood. Just painted it and a sign.
Like a professional that can like stencil and then paint.
Probably over durable material, plastic or metal, so it would stand up.
Show him Ron's work right there so he can see what we're talking about.
Take a look.
We never use wood anymore either.
Yeah, it's not durable.
PVC is basically the same thing, what is.
Right, you're gonna have to.
Yeah. Want to know your answer, Bruce?
I'm sorry?
Do you need to say your name?
Ron Triano from Foley Signs.
I was trying.
He's a sign guy.
He's a sign guy. So.
He did already.
I wanted to do the second obligation.
I think you should probably take this.
You're, you're.
Yes.
Why do we do this? Why don't you ask for adjourn, ask for this to be adjourned the next time and either go with what was originally approved, or if you want to come in with an application of professionally prepared sketch, you can come in under the same application.
Same application, so you don't have to redo it or pay a fee. So if you want to ask for us to adjourn this and go back and get it professionally produced and.
And submit it to the clerk before to me.
To go to a sign person and prepare it like this and image it.
That's what should be submitted, something along that line and color, so we know exactly the color and everything.
Okay.
So do you want to ask for adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor of granting the, oh, do I have a?
I'm a, I'm a.
Motion, I'll second adjourn.
All favor.
All in favor, say aye, aye. Opposed, no, motion passes.
What?
So if you can get this done, we'll try to get it back on the next month. It'll probably be August 16th. There's a sign guy sitting right here.
I'd have to be away then.
All right, so it might be the 23rd. Okay.
Is everybody in luck?
What is that, the 23rd of August? Two weeks out. One, well, well, it's still fall and two. Is the 23rd gonna work?
We can figure that out.
Okay.
I appreciate this, thank you.
Probably gonna be the 23rd. We'll let you know. But again, if you want to talk to this gentleman, grab a business card, you know, professional sign, you don't have to, you know, resubmit the fee. We've adjourned this, so you can just resubmit, you know, professional designs and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. All right, the second up is a sign application for Nora Buriani, you mean, bro?
That's Ron. That's an extra thing, give him that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have a. It doesn't have a.
My boss's name.
I'll talk if it doesn't.
Just, 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 just.
Hey, why don't you just write it on this, and then you have a team too. This is you, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just write the number on there.
He's got a car, yeah.
I gave him the phone number.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Steve, can you name an address or director again, please?
It's Ron Triano. My address in 74 Livingston Avenue, Tapan, New York.
Can you see?
Um, okay, just trying to get the sign approved that's before you. It's a reface of an existing light box. We're just going to put an acrylic face in it with the print you see there. And that's basically it. There's a little bit of door lettering on the second page.
Is the box still open?
I believe it is. We actually put a temporary in there. We had it corclased, and the building inspector called us because we had to get a permit for it. So we flipped it around, but he said it was lit, so. It is a light box, I'm just.
Right, that's why I was just asking.
But they said it looks lit.
Does anybody have any questions or comments other than Mr. Downs? It's not plywood involved?
No.
Hand drawings, you know? Do I have the motion to approve this sign application? Or is it an application? Motion is there, Ben Sickel, we have a second.
A second.
Mr. McHenry, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck with your potential client.
Thank you, my boss will have to be a little.
All right, the next on the agenda is, is anybody here from Carl's Villains?
No.
All right, let's start. Yeah. Where's that coming?
No, but you did that.
Requested to be adjourned.
Okay, I'm not realized that, okay. What about old business, the new business? I want to bring up some old business. Let me just pull the documentation here. The, is it still called Vale Estates?
No, Vale Estates was after it was John Lorre, then it was Vale Estate, then it was 175 Lafayette Avenue.
Now it's like Antrim Circle.
Now, then it was Suffolk Stone Castle, now it's not Antrim Point.
New Antrim Point, okay. So there was an old Antrim Point at some point, huh? It's at 175 Lafayette Avenue?
It's not. It's at 176, 178, and they named it, yeah, I know, that's why they named it now, we have no idea.
It's 176 to 180 Lafayette Avenue. Is there anything else I need to know before I'm issued?
Yeah, I think you're good, I'm just trying to keep you up to par here.
Okay, well, for those of you who aren't aware, it is the building of Lafayette next to, it's adjacent to Esther Githlau on one side, and Verizon Building on the other side. You know, prior to joining the board, I watched the videos on all of the things that went on, you know, Mr. Howard and Mr. Burton on the board. But essentially, they agreed to a plan and the decision set to reuse the stone wall. The stone wall goes from pretty much the monastery all the way down there to reuse those stones as much as practicable. And they removed the whole wall, used the trunk practicable. Jim, who's here, who's on the planning board, called them out on it, so to speak. And, you know, they talked about the cost and of an engineered retaining wall and so on and so forth. And essentially, they agreed to put a stone veneer. In fact, four of the board members at the time went up there, Mr. Genatino went, Mr. Ben Sickel went, I think both Mac County brothers went and picked it out. And there was discussion, you know, it's too gray, we need some brown. And I believe that they ended up settling on Bucktown as the stone facing.
Here.
Okay. Have you got that?
Okay.
Right there, okay. So, yeah, if you want to look at Bucktown as a one here, yeah. But it was pointed out to me, and, you know, I knew this was happening as the building went up just a little while, I was expecting the retaining walls to be faced. But the bottom line is, is I don't know, they had planted grass and there was hay on it and everything else. And I know Mr. Genatino did a great job to do what's right for the village and Mr. Ben Sickel and the Mac County brothers. I really want to have a discussion to make sure that the village gets what we are expecting to get. Not only did they remove that wall, they removed the stone, they actually had the stone crushed and moved off site. And then said, well, it was gonna cost a lot of money, we'd have to remove the mortar and so on and so forth. And, you know, Mr. Genatino and the board at that time held their feet to the fire. So I'm trying to figure out exactly what are we expecting? Because it now looks like they are dating a trench by the sidewalk. Is that the wall we're expecting? Or are we expecting, you know, veneer on the two retaining walls? So I'd like to, I know Mr. Paul Stanbridge went very instrumental on the Zoom. You know, I've watched so many.
My name is all over this.
I've watched so many of these videos, the fine videos I have been playing. You know, and who wasn't reading all these other things that happened during the height of the pandemic? So I apologize. But I wanted to have a discussion on this, like what is supposed to happen? I mean, Mr. Dale has one expectation and, you know, maybe a different expectation from some of the other board members. And I wanted to give a background, because again, I wasn't here at that time, and Mr. Howard and Mr. Rivera were here at that time as well.
I can tell you.
I'm going to start with a question, just so I can listen to something.
Sure.
How do we communicate between whoever it is who said they were gonna do what they were gonna do and everybody else who sees them not doing what they're supposed to be doing? How does that, like, because they're not here to answer to anything. How do they become part of the process so we understand what are they thinking right now? Because I heard your question was very good. What does this mean? What does that mean, the retaining wall for that?
So, and Mr. Genatino.
Can I suggest something? Call Luke Kaufman, the attorney. He should have all this information. It was agreed to. Those of us that went down, we laid the stone out, showed them how it had to go, and it had to go the length of their property, just like everybody else.
And it appears that that's not what's happening.
Well, here's the thing, Andrew, I read it out to the fact, I wasn't part of it. But to me, when I went to Lafayette and saw those big engineered retaining walls go around the circle, they talked at great length about engineered retaining walls. That's what I was expecting. People said, yeah, what are those walls there for? Oh, they're, my understanding is we're putting a veneer, a stone veneer, the Bucktown on there. And I think other people, I think Mr. Dale agrees with that. And I think other folks may think that it was rebuilding the wall along the sidewalks. So I just want to make sure we know what it is and get what we're supposed to get.
I can tell you what I thought it was, that doesn't mean it's right. But as you come into Suffolk, there are stone retaining walls. In some cases, on both sides, but a lot very continuous on the right, past the library, past Esther Githlau. And I think there was a desire to keep that aesthetic, to sort of entering like community, and it felt like there was a context to it. So that was the desire, to maintain that low retaining wall that sort of continues into the village. The walls that are back on their property, like within their property limits, I don't think we, well, I wasn't expecting those to be the Bucktown, the stone. I thought it was mainly the low, the low stone wall, which continues across many properties. But that's what they were supposed to put back. And when they didn't put it back, they had to replace it in kind with the concrete material. So that doesn't mean it's right, so that's what I thought.
Well, my decision to agree with you, because.
Oh, you're absolutely right. It was the low wall, just the way it goes all the way up Lafayette.
Like I said, I, my personal feeling is I know that Jim had worked extremely hard on this, and I was gonna be damned if, if things didn't turn out the way that it was expected, because of the amount of work that he would put into it.
Yeah, we all did, we all agreed.
However, what I can tell you is that I didn't expect that there was going to be the wall that was going to be continued, but there was a discussion about any of the engineered retaining walls. So I was also under the impression that that whole thing would match going straight up, because those are all engineered retaining walls. To be honest with you, I mean, it looks like the, you know, it looks like a prison block standing up on, up on the hill. But I was under the, I was at least under the understanding that the engineered retaining walls, and I didn't realize that they were gonna be as big as they are, but I was under the impression that the engineered retaining walls were going to have that face too, because that is what was discussed in many of the videos. So I understand that we were all under the expectation that there was gonna be that one wall that was gonna be continuation down.
That's the only one. Well, how do you do a?
Well, but like I said.
Nothing about the retaining wall.
That there was discussion about the engineered retaining wall. So that's.
They are all the way around the property, and some just in the front.
No, no, I understand.
It didn't match the rest of the, the actual property.
I checked for the front. I went from, because there was reference to across the street, looking at Sunday Night Home, right? And so initially, that's what I thought. But then when they started talking about engineered retaining walls, which are the ones that go along and down the, sort of like the depth of a property, I think that's part, I mean, it looks like the building's on, they planted grass, and then Monday they started digging along the sidewalk. And I drove past before I got here. And it looks like they're putting down a wall in there. But, you know, like I said, as Andrew said, you put a lot of work into this, and this board put a lot of work into this, and I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, the spirit of what was agreed to is fulfilled.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, I think you could, what you're bringing up is, I think you're fulfilling what they agreed to do when you were there. You could ask them to put the face on those ugly walls that they built.
Because we couldn't see that. We're not with that. That's wrong. If there was an agreement to engineered retaining walls, then my attitude is.
There was both of you there.
So my attitude is, if there was an agreement for, you know, for the engineered structure of retaining walls, then that's the agreement. Because, to be honest with you, when the original wall was taken down and then stone was crushed, it wasn't crushed accidentally, it wasn't crushed for any other reason than they didn't want that there to begin with. Well, that's all well and good, but at this point, they then made an agreement with us, and I just believe that we should hold them to the agreement. I just want to make sure that, that we were 100% that it was.
Doesn't sound like.
What's that?
It doesn't sound like, you already have a member saying that that's what they agreed for.
No, I understand, I understand that that's what maybe people thought, but what I'm saying is, if they agreed to structurally retain, structurally engineered retaining walls, then that was the agreement, structurally engineered retaining walls.
But I think the agreements are structural.
They are structurally.
That's, that's my point. Those should be faced, because that's what they said they were gonna face.
Right, you caught them in kind of like, they didn't mean to say that. They meant to say, we're gonna build an engineered structured retaining wall.
I don't think that that's an engineered structured retaining wall, though. It's not retaining anything, it's just a wall. If they're saying structured engineer retaining walls, retaining walls that are structurally engineered hold back something, which is.
They are. That wall.
Correct.
It's a bank.
That's exactly my point.
And that wall that's there is the structured engineering wall.
And they agreed that they were going to face, ever.
No.
No, that's what the video says.
I don't remember.
No, they had, they.
It's cement.
But there's.
It's not gonna be the wall.
Actually, I think we can, to be honest with you.
It's cement.
If you look in the minutes.
If you.
You spoke with Holly with what's taking place here, you're never gonna get the ball too high. You already have three or four people saying that, it's not the case.
Well, like I said.
Andrew, if we looked at the plans, I would have known that that retaining wall was gonna be, we insisted on ground level wall being aesthetically like everything else.
I, okay. And I agree, because my initial thing was, okay, that's what we're looking at. Somebody at some point referred to across the street, but they had an engineer, after saying how much money it was, and happened to remove the mortar, but then, you know, they had no problem coming in and crushing the stone, then they're hinging on the word practicable. Well, I can hinge on the fact that they gotta do what they said they were gonna do and. But, but when they started bringing, like, is this wall against the sidewalk gonna be a structurally engineered wall? If that's the case, then I don't think we have a leg to stand on. If they're building a wall and putting stone veneer on it, then those are the ones. And you can make that argument. All I, listen, I don't want, I don't want to stop it, I just want to make sure that we hold them to what they're supposed to be doing, and there's definitely a misunderstanding, that's all.
I would go back, I mean, I don't like to live this walk, look, either, I think they're ugly, but like the intent was to preserve the existing wall. So I think they messed up.
But when that, but when that didn't happen, then there was an agreement that all structural retained, all the structurally engineered retaining walls would be faced.
No, no, absolutely not. That's what the video says, Jim, and it's not.
I'll go back and I'll, and I'll transcribe the video. I just want to make sure that we get, Jim, this is more for you than it is for anyone else. You have worked really hard on this, and I really don't want them to be able to trend on.
Danny, what do you remember?
Which one is that?
The 16th.
What you said inside.
What do you remember?
The 24th.
I mean, he was. We'd owned three year. And then, and brought the stone.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if the agreement was structurally engineered retaining walls, that was applied.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying.
I don't think that's what it said.
Well, go back, go back around to the second one.
Uh, pull the plans.
You did pull the plans.
Then, then, or 2021?
Okay. One way, yeah. Either it's, either it's the wall that they agreed to.
Yeah, that's this.
If you're visible, is that the.
I watched.
Correct.
February 2021.
I don't, I don't have no problem going back.
I'm not being around anything, if they would.
No, just move them back and just see what was agreed to, that's all. I mean, purely, another chance, nobody's gonna try and force them if there's something that they did not agree to.
Seems as if they.
Like I said, we can take a look and see what was agreed to, and if it was agreed to.
Well, then you say.
It was agreed to.
Andrew, was there a meeting, half, half meeting?
Was there a meeting after which?
Were you saying they agreed to do structurally?
That was, that was, I think, the last, the last of the meetings, if that's what they agreed to, and then we, and then we put it.
18 says of the writ decision, when removing and reinstalling the stone wall along Lafayette Avenue, the applicant shall, to extend practical, use stone for the original wall and reinstalling the stone wall as shown on the site note. And then all the discussion was, they destroyed it, et cetera.
So that was their responsibility to find new stone to build about that wall, which it looks like they might be building right now.
Yeah, it does, it does. But if you go back to the original reading in February 2021, they had, the guy was sitting there pretty uncomfortable about, yeah, it's gonna cost a lot of money, and what happened to the stone? Well, we crushed it and took it off site because it's a small site.
You're right, that discussion did go on.
Then, then they went on about, you know, we have to build an engineered structural wall, so on and so forth. And so that's, listen, if, if that's not right, it's not right, but I think we should look at the video. You know, if you look at February 2021, 19 minutes in, it starts with Aaron Vanul, and watch it, and then March 2021, it starts at five minutes. And, and watch it, and then March 2021, it starts at five minutes and 20 seconds in. And then on March 24th, 2021, there was a special meeting, this was all that was discussed and approved. All I want to do is make sure that the village gets what we're supposed to get. That's, that's it. Because, again, I wasn't there, but I have a completely different understanding. Uh, I wasn't there in 2016 when it was originally approved, is that what it was? This is one.
Yeah, it's approved before that, that's a different.
Which time?
And who owned it?
John Lori owned it and then he sold it to Dale.
So do we, do we sort of, you know, I could email everybody where to start looking? Because I, by the way, I watched like probably eight or nine videos and nobody back then was unmuting themselves. I've heard that too many times on Zoom. But those are the, the meetings and that's when you start them. And let's just make sure, by the way, by the way, everybody in the room wants to do what, what, so just make sure that, you know.
What does it matter?
Have a look at it.
Exactly.
And then is the procedure, do we invite them back for a discussion?
Or do we talk about it next meeting or get an email?
Well, if it looks like they're actually building it, it seems like we just have to kind of drive by in the next month?
But what is it supposed to do?
Listen, it's really the building inspector's doing the job. You, you guys, you really have no power at this point about anything.
Correct, so we do have that.
Inspector will be, is the one who's on the side.
So we have to go to the rite shack too and pull their permits?
I mean, well, my attitude is, my attitude is, let's, let's find out exactly what it is that they agreed to. And, I mean, yes, we, we do have some authority.
He just, he just, he just read it.
He just read it from the approval?
I understand that.
Those are the exact words, if they're going to take that wall down and rebuild it with the existing stones at the best of their ability. But the wall, it sounds like the wall that was there before was not a structurally engineered wall. They're not just going to throw some rocks up there and be like, build your wall. They're going to put in what they, you know, believe has to be better than its next door neighbor. So I think that's really what the gist of what they were discussing was, that those ugly things that they put up, who knows?
Right, but if, if they violate the terms of the site plan, it's a building inspector or court enforcement issue.
Correct.
So.
I mean, what can I do? But the planning board has every right, just like every citizen has every right, to go to the building inspector and say, listen, we believe that there's an issue here.
Right, oh, yeah.
So that's, that's the authority that we have, that's what I'm saying.
The building inspector wants to go on site?
Bitch from you or from Rob to the building inspector saying, check it out.
Well, I mean, you could also ask the building inspector to come in, maybe he's there. And he's, presumably he goes once a week or so to see what's going on, that's part of what they.
Right, he might be able to answer the question, are they actually building the wall that's going to match the wall that runs up 711?
The building inspector wasn't here with all these approvals either, so.
Yeah, he, he's not going to have any idea.
I, I think we just take a second look. I'll email everybody what to, you know, where to start watching. And, listen, this is not about, you know, holding, calling anybody out, it's making sure that they're doing what they agreed to, that's all. And I think there's a miscommunication and that's all. You know, a few people have said that they don't like the look of the existing wall. My understanding, the whole time when people said, what's that ugly wall? Well, it's, oh no, they're putting a veneer on it. And that was my understanding, again, I wasn't here.
That's what it's supposed to be, veneer, sections.
No, no, on those.
Did you touch the?
No, not on the, I think that's a retaining wall for the parking area.
It is, yeah.
If I remember correctly.
Again, and I appreciate your input. And again, the whole thing here is, I don't know the developer, I have nothing against the developer, I just want to make sure that, that the, the people of the village get what was agreed to.
I, I don't, there's a question, I don't mind watching the videos, I'm just refreshing my memory. My memory is not, not perfect, so, yeah.
I'll take.
Do you have a second plan map? Because we can show them on a second plan map as it shows.
The map is here, I brought the map.
No, the map is here.
Did you bring the map?
There's no photo of what we're doing. Yours, yours is.
Yeah, but you're not looking at the picture, you're looking at the drawing, the sketch of the whole problem. You mentioned in the minutes that I tickled the March 16th meeting when we had the Zoom meeting on the stone. Paul said it's meant to be a relatively continuous look. That was to be from Horizon.
The approved plan, there's a note here that says propose retaining wall to be reconstructed utilizing stone from existing stone wall to the greatest extent practical. And it points to, uh, that fence here, that, I'm sorry, the wall here.
Right there.
Then it shows, it shows the two walls, just says propose retaining.
Can I see the?
So now it'll be easy to explain to the building inspector, just make sure they're building a wall that looks the same from the end of their property all the way to the.
Right, but Andy's point is, what I was pointing at was, what we're talking about is pointing to the smaller walls, not pointing to the bigger, to the.
Right, and I, and I could tell you that if, if. I understood at the time, uh, my understanding was that all the walls got to look the same. And if I was under the impression that that was not going to be the case, that we have a big monster, a gray wall staring down the way it was in Suffolk, I never would have agreed to that. So that's just where I stand and that's just how I feel and that's just what I thought. And if I'm wrong, there, no, we don't.
But that's hindsight now, unfortunately.
Well, that's why, but I was under the impression that that's what they agreed to. So one of the acts of videos, I want to see if that's in fact what they agreed to.
Yes.
But the plan does say, uh, the wall of the wall, correct?
Right. We, we're talking about the one wall because that's the wall that was removed. But when they were talking about structurally engineered walls, they figured that all the walls are going to be the same because of the fact that they're structurally engineered retaining walls.
Show them.
Well, the plan doesn't show that they're, that they're strong either, that, it doesn't show that as well. Are you believing the old walls surrounding the parking lot and all the way around the other side, were going to be strong walls too? That, that it was going to be, that.
They're retaining walls.
Well, I'm, I'm not worried about the retaining walls that you can't see out of sight. What I am, what I am looking at is, as, as you look at it aesthetically, you would want something that, that follows suit. But that makes the argument a little bit more difficult because you keep on talking about structural walls and all the odd stone that you use is for structural. Okay, well, if that's what was agreed to, then that's what was agreed to. I can, I can make the.
I'd like to see them different, I, I.
He's already, he's already settling in court to say, anything I can see from Route 59 has to have the stone. Don't worry about the rest, he already has that in his back pocket. That's what he's, that's what he's holding no negotiated back to.
There's no negotiation about anything, I want to see what was agreed to. And I, and I think that if we don't do that, then, you know, then why don't you ask anybody to do anything?
Really got to discuss it at this point.
That's reasonable.
I mean, I.
That would be very.
I'm just saying, if you don't go back and take a look at what was agreed to, then moving forward, I don't think I agree to anything. Because if we're not going to hold anybody to what we, what, what the agreements are, then it's pointless even having the discussions then moving forward, that's all. And I'm not being, not being difficult about it, I just think that, you know, like I said, we should look at it. And if I'm incorrect and I'm wrong, then I'm absolutely wrong, that's fine. But I was not under the impression that there was going to be two gigantic gray walls above, uh, above, uh, above the, the wall that was down below and they were all going to look completely different. I, I wasn't under that because the other two are structural, you know, engineered retaining walls.
There is a typical detail showing the U-Lot retaining wall, which, which is what those ugly walls are. The U-Lot walls on their typical.
Right, which is, which is no problem because also in here it says that.
It's only called out.
No, but also in here it says that cement could be used to, um, to adhere to the, you know, in, in. They are adhered to the wall individually with cement, so that still doesn't tell us. It shows us that that could be what's behind the wall without the veneer on it, you know? I just, like I said.
They're getting close to that point. So I don't know how you want to handle getting into.
But we're not asking them to stop, right? Is their building.
No, it's that CO is not remanded where, so if they come in for their certificates of vacancy and whatever, we have a leg to stand on and to stop them and say, well.
Wait, 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 not everybody's saying just.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. That's going to be your only way that you're going to control them getting their certificate of vacancy. If that is wrong, if, if what they're doing is not the right thing, yes.
It's a building inspector issue, let the building inspector know.
That's what I'm saying, who's going to let them know? Who is going to?
We have investigated.
But the agreement was between the builder and the building inspector, the agreement is between the builder and us. So that's why we're the ones.
Just like every single plan, you approve it and then it goes to the building department and they take the ball and run it.
Right, so we're looking back at what we agreed to.
But listen, you can absolutely do that, but you're saying in terms of enforcement, it is the building inspector's.
Absolutely, we understand it. But I'm not going to go out of fun and bulldoze it, I'm just saying that we should definitely take a look into what we agreed to.
But I'm saying, holding up, you know, they, they have a message right here, like, you have to be careful with saying not to give a CO, that's all. I'm just saying, on, on something like that, you have to be careful with saying, you can't give a CO when there's something like this. I think you got to get the building inspector, but I'll just ask you at the chair, chairmen, speak to the building inspector and take it from there. You continue to look at the videos and see.
Okay. Do you have options to do this?
No.
All right, we're good, okay. So are we, we down with the old business for now, we have new business? Andrew Dale, you want to? You know what, no, no, I'm not going to.
See, we don't need that discussion, we're not agreeing to any of it.
All right, no problem. Um, we've set the meeting for August, is August 23rd, work?
Is it 23rd?
Yeah, and Bruce, the play will be over by now, current?
Oh, I see. Works for you?
Work for everybody else? All right, promotion to set the August meeting for the 23rd, August at 7:00 PM. I'll make that motion, Mr. McHenry, you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Stanwood, second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries, now a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Howard, second. Mr. Dale, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.